Security, regular, leading of the DPO Bay City Council has closed the border. And once again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay.
Do you want to roll call?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, roll call, sorry Jeff. Jeff's rolling absolutely.
We're waiting right now. We want the short meetings.
Okay, short.
Here.
Gambino.
Here.
Left.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
A short, seconded by Gambino.
Yes.
Yes.
Bates.
Yeah.
Grant.
Um, the county's favorable.
Mayor left, I move to approve the county's favorable as presented, and I can answer any questions.
And so we let it go. It's a small amount of things. Is that fine? What we'll do is simply accept credit from the very frequently used.
Who is the vendor?
It's not called Walt Cradley. No, it's Interstate. Oh, industrial.
Age six, or twelve. And twice, two thirty.
And so that's a group. And so the cat is our cat. So we'll leave it that way. And two thirty fifty on credit.
Any more discussion?
Gambino.
Yes.
Left.
Special orders, do you want to say anything about the salary committee? Yes, um, we've had a response from the group, and she's moving along with it and saying that, um, I think they had twelve cities that were trying to contact us and we did that. A few of them that have responded and. All right, moving on then. Reports of officers' board or standing committees, parks commission.
My name's Ron Gillum.
Large concrete, um, rock, it looks like a rock, large, so when they poured the foundation, the final, they unloaded all the extra concrete, total nine yard concrete rock, big hole. And we were going to remove it, and the park, we talked about it, and we came up with that. Well, if it was covered with moss, it would probably look better and blend in, it would look like concrete. So the question was Bill's force to Eric, who's our, who was our plant expert who wrote on us, and the park was to spray the concrete with buttermilk. And then somebody said, boy, every cat in the neighborhood will be licking that. Ah. And so.
And it stuck, right?
Didn't work.
It did. Yeah.
It must have, I haven't noticed.
It's covered with concrete, but the cats, they did not.
Assuming that the, that this is in the budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. A short, seconded by Gambino, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. Bates.
Yeah.
Grant.
Curry Murray will be happy.
Well, we are always happy to be very happy.
They're thinking it's going to be the top self responding DPO there.
Okay, um, shall we move on to the harbor stuff?
Yes.
Oh, public comments, I apologize. I'm not legal tonight. Public comments, harbor. Our public. Let's go on to, and now it really is the harbor.
I'll update the pilings and the dredging. So the pilings, I've got, um, repair drawings on Harvard, repair. That, um, is just placing inside the H beam. Like, I kind of drew a picture up here. So inside the H beam, there's angle iron that'll run parallel with the inside corner, and you bolt through and reinforce it, you sister these, these pieces in, all four corners. And you have carriage bolts, which are rounded on one end, carriage bolts to be on the outside where the rub, where the rub rail is on the, on the hoop. And Jeff and I came up with a great idea to use the. Right, so this, it would help, just in the meantime, it's kind of a quick fix, just until we can get the pilings replaced. But it'll. So we've taken those drawings and sent it to Ferguson in Astoria, and they're kind of put a, they're putting together a quick price quote. He's going to try to get a couple divers down with some drills and underwater drills and stuff, but he, he said that we get the material and get the holes drilled in and get. Well, it's just more of a temporary fix, because the pilings probably going to be pulled within, we're thinking, you know, more than a year or two. So, but yes, it'd probably be galvanized piece. That's pretty much, and then, and then Jeff and I, as far as total replacement of the pilings, I think it's up to the, good recommendation from the harbor commission to think about just replacing our pilings, see what minus we have. We can move it in and just start replacing pilings themselves, and then looking at the dock. It's so expensive to do the whole thing, you know, we could do it, the whole dock, that means every place, every dock's load and, and pilings. But the main concern right now is really getting pilings replaced, and then look for the dock loads. A suggestion, use material for the reinforcement panels that is substantial enough, but it doesn't have to be galvanized. If you galvanized it, that's a zinc coating, then it becomes a sacrificial. Yeah, it might, right. See, I wasn't too sure. It would.
Hold up against, uh, ungalvanized iron.
Right. You've got that galvanic action working on it right there. Better to use, than using light material, ungalvanized material. Yeah, I believe so, right. I think the quote's, you know, there was a steel, and then there was galvanized. Quote we got was for ungalvanized steel, like, that's similar to that photo. Background and trade winds are the galvanized.
Contact with dissimilar metal, it's too big.
Yeah. I know that in the ground, too. Yeah. That's definitely, it's probably something that Ferguson will know, but definitely I'll take a note, let him know, um, as an update. So the, anyway, so Jeff and I are working on trying to get, to see where we can get, in what price quote, when Ferguson comes down here, we're going to try to get the head guy to give us an updated quote, and have it be on scene, too, to see exactly what he may mean. There's, there's a lot of piling on the docks, like, there's a lot of that side by side. Are they really, do we really need, say, twelve pilings in that, like, one section there? Or can we use half that? Or not half, but maybe minus a couple and do the same job? So, we're going to, I don't know if that has to be engineered, or why, or, um, because the pilings would be placed in a different spot, because maybe we have to do them outside. I prefer inside, but there's all these options. In, in the study that the city did, there's different options in the work we had done for the preliminary engineering for the harbor for, for docks. So there's both, where it shows pilings running down the center, and then there's offset pilings on the outside of the sea. Most, most marinas have are harbors. So, um, the, the next thing would be the meeting we're going to have with Merkley's office.
Director Merkley's office on Friday.
Maybe Jeff could speak a little bit on that, he's more familiar with the timeframes.
So, this Friday at 1:00 PM, Senator Merkley's office has arranged to have a meeting here with Don Ferguson, local politicians as well, trying to get some, to be people. But we're putting together a meeting at 1:00, it'll be at the community hall, and.
First thing on the agenda, before we get into the next involves, is we will walk over to the harbor and look at what we're talking about, so they can see firsthand. And then also dredging, as well as the pilings and the docks. Meeting's expected to last until about 2:30, 3:00. And if we can get your full attendance, that would be great.
Also invited.
Dredging, I've made a collage over there, a project to take down there, and it shows some of the current photos that were recently taken of low tide. Right, because the type goes out of crease, little channels, but then, and then the material, the fine, finite stuff kind of stays at the, at the edges. That the gold's probably now at the bottom. It is. I was trying to get.
I don't have my book in my pocket, but it's remarkably unspectacular if there's enough water there to cover it up, because the water is so turbid, you can't see.
Yeah, right.
Well, we could do some soundings with the harbor skiff and a stick.
That's what I plan on doing, I'm going to have the harbor guy. Photos that morning. I'm torn on that, I've been asked to be there, and I feel like I need to be, but I'm also. Picture of what the depth is under the keel of that. Because the charter boats are going to be out.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm not going to take my boat over there and fill the cooling system full of mud.
No, but, but you see what I mean, you don't have to be all the way in there, but you could lease.
Well, even with the harbor skiff, if we had somebody doing some soundings.
With a, with a story.
Exactly.
Yeah. But this, but the harbor skiff is. It draws. Doesn't draw a lot of water.
And that would be important.
Yeah.
At low tide.
Yeah.
If it is minus tide, it's going to be like that right high and dry, the dock may.
Okay, that's it for, that's the only question.
Okay, how about, we want to.
Okay, uh, we got, uh, we got seven checks from them. Bills up to date. Through the documents. Has been very good to work with, uh, we're constantly in. I did hear from Pete. Intuitively, it is October 2nd. They came back with the 7th.
Oh, I didn't get that.
Which, okay. As most of you are aware, Terry Tom, a long-term employee of the city's been locked in the trade relief. And that is coming to an end. He just passed it from purge disability. Hopefully doesn't have a big lag in that between, in those trade relief. But several employees have asked if they could donate some vacation or prompt time to Terry. By our. Handbook, it's not possible to do that unless you go through the short term and long term disability programs as well, and to be circumstantial, Terry does not do that. So, we are asking for an exception to the handbook, to this one occasion, so that employees can. They're asked the cost of that to the city. Basically, the wash, basically, the formula is that we take the gross hourly pay of the owner, and multiply that by the. Number of hours, and then take that and divide it by the gross paid by the city. That gives you how many hours we would be asking to donate. But if it's a wash, whether we pay, yeah, whether we pay our employee or we pay Terry.
I've done this before in the past. I'm delighted to entertain a motion. Well, that's a separate discussion, and we won't deal with that now. Yes.
So, um, yeah, Carla. So, this person is at a certain rate of pay. And Carla's at a certain rate of pay. So, she donates her, her time, her comp time, or one of the two eligibility.
Vacation or comp.
Vacation or comp time, to, to him, in this case. Um, is, it goes to him at her rate of pay?
It would be transferred at her rate of pay, and we would take his rate and multiply it by the number of hours, and we would come up with the formula for him. But basically, it would be the cost of her, say, one week's vacation she donated. That's what the mission.
But he'd be getting her rate of pay?
Yes.
Okay. And then adversely, uh, then, uh, somebody that had a lower rate of pay that, that contributed to this gentleman, it would go to him at the lower rate?
Right. It's figured on the donor's rate.
Okay, right. Then that one would be, uh, let's make it real simple. Say somebody's making $10, and now somebody's making $5, now. Guy making $10, donates 20 hours. So the guy's getting $5, is going to get.
Double.
Double, so he's going to get twice that. And same vice versa. So, if somebody's making 10, and they donate 20 hours, and this guy's making 5, yeah, okay. That's what I, that's what I figured, but.
Yeah, good.
How may, how may the, the motion that we approved of this.
Gambino.
Yes.
Yes.
Bates.
Yes.
Yeah.
End of this, it's where we have the forest meeting, 12 inch forest meeting, and it's going to be a base coat, a small all the way over the other side, so it's easy to throw at. We also have a, um, next year, we're going to do the sidewalk, it's a bit. So, when we do upgrades, anything, come back at home as if we only do half. So, the contractor suggested and explained to me why, I thought it was just him trying to sell more asphalt, but it does make sense, because it is something belonging. So, it's, it's just for Shell, and then the other one is Vista Avenue, which, which continue the, we've already put a green system in, and it's going to provide a little more parking, too, to the pocket parks, it's a little bit wider. And I went ahead and had it a little wider, so there's areas for cars to park on Vista, that utilize our little pocket parks on North Point. There's really no parking on North Point, and, uh, I told the folks up there, we try to integrate some parking, but this is an opportunity towards the other areas, we just really couldn't. There's an area at Yokohama Trail where it's a little wide, but that's the reason why this, if, if you notice when it is paved, that it's wider, it's because of that, adding a little bit of parking on, on that part of Vista. And where it is, it's past the coffee shop. We did the overlay to Cirque Point last year, and, um, just before, it goes up to the right hand side of Vista, which is the main artery on, on. That's the area that has no asphalt. So. So I was really trying to get it finished this year, because there's a drainage problem in the surface of the, that's going to have some prep work in, also, and the prep worker, Abruptage, they call it. The terminology is, when it's all finished.
Did you total this? Was this total?
I did not. It came in late, I'm sorry.
I do know. Nobody has it. But it isn't total.
It's not. I can do it real quick here, sorry. Thirty thousand eighty-five?
There's a few cents, but I think.
So thirty thousand eighty-six.
Anyone have questions for Brad? Short seconded by Goddard.
All positive figures. I show us thirty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-six, thirty-six.
Well, right, I can't either. What was your number with the calculator? Thirty-four?
Thirty-four, one thirty-six point three-six.
So Kathy, are you willing to amend your motion from round two? Thirty-five thousand thirty-two.
Yeah, I get thirty-four one thirty. Right, Robert? Yes.
We have bridging issues for November 21st. We covered that, or is it?
We covered that with this harbor.
So that's covered.
You said it's.
One o'clock.
Okay, now to move on to correspondence.
It's finalized. We have copies, Robert and I talked about those today. Did you guys all get copies of?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, it's good. We want to move on to the Farland and Watson. Regardless, we're actually, it's going to be more feasible for the city with our new. You don't have to worry about rain, we're not like.
Does that all want to be completed?
The units coming in October, I'd say we'd probably be. The building, I'd say Thanksgiving till Thanksgiving, and I'll bet you that it's up and running and working. Ready for the Thanksgiving flush that happened.
I think once it's up and running, it might be.
I did a report come by transmission. We'd like to do an afternoon tour of the plants at the snowboard now, right? So the Aisley Street overlay, there's one area on there, I don't know if you folks have gone down and looked at Aisley, but it turned out really nice. It's a very in the melody. It deadens back there, but there's an area to turn around back there, but it turned out really nice, and neighbors are really happy. Hot hole gravel road that's half gravel, half chip sealed, and gravel running all over the place. The city crew helping with the sand and bank. It was very helpful this year, but they got a lot of thank yous from the Chamber, and also the Chamber utilized the county work crew. And they. From the Chamber, so for three days. We got quite a bit of work done in the harbor, the nature trails gravelled, and. I suggested I write a thank you to the Chamber. They did a really good job with the sand and bank, too, along with all the volunteers in the Chamber. It was a really good. Landscape work at City Hall, you can see that Jeff and Carla actually came up with some great ideas with some of our landscaping. We put the piling out there where the road will ramp it in. Lake Nursery is supposed to be. Any of the jetty rock, I've got a lot of the plants, the guys have pulled, the jetty rock was one issue that the Corps of Engineers is our responsibility to do. A lot of the work's been done, or it's placing the rocks back in. Grab the rocks and put them in place, but all the plant removal has been done and cleaned up, so I at least had to take photos and give them an update. Rocky Creek, the intake is still running. I know ODAC got ahold of you and wanted to know, because they cleaned that area, it's a tunnel that goes under the highway, six foot. All you guys, the communities. The. And so the fire hall's put back, they textured it. Organized the basement, but. Get good winter projects, the guys could paint the ceiling and stuff, but. Other than that, it's all good. Yeah, again, the sand and bank was wonderful.
Thank you. Jeff?
Tomorrow afternoon, Thursday morning, we have. Adding a purchase order module. Girls have questions about some of. In your packets, there are two job descriptions. One is the City Harbor Utilities clerk. Currently doing utilities, which is water, wastewater. She works with.
Her mother was making. Job, it's been very difficult.
That was Vince happening. We have that one. Also, the other one is for a. You look at the job description, which was recently redone. Are picking up on it, but. Excellent job with. No, was I supposed to? Yeah. So I'd like to bring her up to the, like I said. The wage would be current wage plus five percent. Like to go ahead and approve those. It's basically that job description you have in your hand is what she's been doing for years and never. Well, before she was secretary. City secretary was her.
What I'm getting at all here is that I remember getting that stat, and I read every one of them word for word. And I noted a ton of discrepancies in consistency, mostly. But I also noted grammatic errors, things like that, and I wrote all those up and submitted.
City Harbor Utility clerk is Beth, and that's what she has been since she joined us.
So is this the same as, okay, all right, it was Kathy's whole job. This one is totally new, or does it still say many years before, Seth?
It's got additional things listed that wasn't currently in the job description.
That's going to trump the secretary, it'll do like the secretary.
I'm good with all that. Do we need to go over this, or, I mean, do we need to prove for you, Kathy? Have you read it?
I have read it.
You have?
I am in full support.
I'm sorry.
That's not true. That's actually not true. We just went through this at the fire district and almost got sued because we wouldn't mention it in public. Salaries are not secret.
Now, it leaves me uncomfortable. All right, because I may not agree. Or any other council person's name would be left out. It's just on this particular one, not the harbor clerk, okay? But on the changing of Carla's. And so I'm not sure if we want to maybe postpone this change until after we get the salary.
Oh, okay. Kathy, you said it was updated?
This, this.
Well, the original job description that I was hired under is not the job description that was presented to council. I don't recall how many meetings ago. But what was sent to Ruth was that this job description that you have in front of you this evening, yes.
With that title, what are we calling the title? It sounds glorious.
Executive and administrative assistant.
Executive administrative assistant. Okay, and who's the executive? She's an administrative assistant.
Well, there was the mayor, there's the. Well, there was the mayor, there's the council, there's me, there's Larry Lewis, Brady.
Let me get a sense of the council, does anyone else agree with Jerome, or have the same concern that Jerome has? No, no, no?
No, would I do that, well, we can go ahead and continue, but I, I still have a question that I want to ask.
Okay, ask your question.
Okay, so Carla, you, you explained to us, uh, Ruth received one of these for your position. Is it in fact this one, or is it yet not the one you were hired under, and not the one we reviewed, but yet a new one?
The one that was reviewed by you is what was sent, based on the conversation, um, that there were grammatical errors and things that, that were discussed at the council meeting, um, that we didn't feel would affect the, um, for the purpose of the salary survey.
So, but still, I, I apologize, this is crazy, but I, I'm still a little lost. The original, the original one you were hired on, we aren't worried about that at all, because we didn't even see it. So then we got this one recently, a few meetings ago, and we reviewed them, and then we have this one. Is there anything majorly different between the one we got a few, uh, month or two ago that also went to Ruth?
Different.
Much difference between that one and this one, other than a title?
The title that you see there, the, was what was sent to Ruth, if that's your question.
But was it, okay, then...
But it was the same description?
Yes.
Okay.
Verbatim?
I thought you said exact additions to this one.
Well, additions from the city secretary job description, which you were all given job descriptions... Quite some time ago, and then, um, what was presented recently is that.
So the one we reviewed just recently and gave to Ruth is this?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, yes.
Does anybody else have, um, before I... So, um, I...
I just wanted to, um, Beth was hired with, uh, just an hour of the agency with received benefits or anything?
No, because she was under, she was under the, uh, twenty hour, or thirty hour...
Person, um, executive city, uh, executive assistant, what's, what's it, in fact, comes with it? Executive Administrative Assistant, that is significantly higher, even though similar, uh, as compensation in other communities, as opposed to the city secretary, send jobs, basically, to...
Um, I gotta disagree with you. And I'll tell you why, these are hopefully experts who are looking at this stuff, and we could say, "Office helper."
Going to consider that.
Good, okay, and we're all waiting, and I agree with that.
But as far as experts come, I mean, look at, we've got a bunch of experts running the state government here. We're in, you know, we're in debt in the... As you said, we're subject to the guidance of experts.
Okay, enough conversation about that, we're waiting when the survey comes in, then we'll, that'll be the next step. Okay, any more correspondence?
No. Do we need to do anything about that?
Well, we need...
Missed them, but...
Well, no, why are we gonna wait?
Well, you just said, you know...
Oh, no, we're gonna wait on the results of the salary survey about the dollars.
Okay, so we're still deciding whether we're gonna do this, is that right?
Staff has asked us to approve those, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Give my favor motion for council.
Be on the utility clerk.
Seconded by a short discussion?
Just wondering why... Really? Are we having the salary setting? Whether we're in the ballpark compared with other communities of our size? Now, wait for it then. But why did we spend the money for the salary survey? Finally answered, correct.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, we'll vote on the motion on the floor following that, if someone wants to present another motion, they certainly can. Any more discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Would you call the question, please?
Yes, call for the question. Read the motion.
The motion was to accept the title change to Executive Administrative Assistant and include the uptake in salary, as well as add the Harvard Utility Clerk.
No, we need, we need two motions up on that, you don't mind, I can't, I, I, I mean, for me, I would, I would approve of one, but not the other. But you believe reading the same, but...
Of one and not the other, then you would vote against the motion as it presently exists, and then if it didn't pass, we would do another one. Okay, any other comments? Yes.
Goddard? Yes.
Motion was passed. One want to bring up another motion?